Good morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're having a little technical difficulty getting the mayor on Zoom. Councilmember Spilsbury, we expect her momentarily otherwise. And Councilmember Thompson is on Zoom as well. And the rest of us are present, Councilmember Freeman, Luna, and Heredia. But we'll go ahead and get started. So, welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for June 2, 2022. Our first item on the agenda is to review the regular council meeting agenda and a special council meeting agenda that we have on schedule for Monday, June 6. So let's first start with a regular meeting agenda for next Monday. And council, any questions?
Vice Mayor, I have a quick question.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Thompson.
Chris, on 4F, that reminded me that when we have discussions with the airport again about, I would like to have an opportunity to investigate getting a bomb dog for Gateway Airport. I kept forgetting about it, and I saw this agenda item, and it reminded me. So I just wanted to ask you that question. If we have the ability or capability in this budget to also include a bomb dog for Gateway.
That's a good question. What we've done in the, what we're doing now for fire and police services are charging the airport. So I think we'd have to ask them what, if they're willing to pay for that. So we can, we can talk to them, and then I don't know, I'd have to talk with PD to see what.
Thank you.
Is.
You're welcome.
And the dog and the handler. So let me just follow up with that. Councilmember, I can't, I don't have a good answer off the top of my head. But let me do a little research, and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to blindside you with that this morning, Chris.
I wasn't ready for that one.
Okay, we have the mayor on Zoom now, and Councilmember Spilsbury has joined us. So we are at full attendance on our council. So we'll continue looking over the Monday's agenda for any other questions. Councilmember Luna.
Thank you. I had a question on 5K. Corinne's here, if she can just talk a little bit about that. And those have to do with fees and charges for Falcon Field. And I think we've had this discussion already. Just to do a recap.
Good morning, I guess, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. The fees and charges with Falcon Field are set up in a way that Falcon Field can continue to remain financially self-sustaining. As most of you know, Falcon Field does not rely upon any sources of funding from the city's general fund. And so the only sources of revenue that we have for our operating expenses, as well as for our portion of any capital expenditures, comes directly from the Airport Enterprise Fund. And so we are always very careful to ensure that we're not raising the fees if we don't think that we need to. But every year, we, we do take a look at where we are with the enterprise fund, where we anticipate things going. And we also annually do a survey of the other airports to find out what fees they are charging. So that if we are contemplating a fee adjustment, that we are staying competitive with what is being charged here in the valley.
So Corinne, any, any in terms of capital improvement projects, runways? Most of that is covered through grants, right? Not through the fees?
Yes, mayor, vice mayor, Councilmember Luna, and council members. That is correct. If we are successful in receiving federal funds and state ADOC funds for our major capital improvement projects, then we only have to pay a percentage of that. So the lion's share of that is paid by the federal or the state funding. But we are required to provide a local match on each one of those projects. And then if there are any other projects that we complete that are not grant-eligible, or perhaps that are grant-eligible, that are so low down on the priority list of what would actually receive a grant, then the airport is responsible for paying for those at 100%.
Great. Thank you, Corinne. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Corinne. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Chris, I noted that there's a lot of job order contracts and increases, you know, to a lot of our departments. And kudos to our departments and yourself. And looking forward, because I noticed on 4L, just for a refuse truck, garbage truck, I guess I'll use that word. I mean, you're, you're buying those like a year ahead. And are there any other issues that we're going to be having in the departments we might need to know about? But just staying on top of this, I think, is extremely important for our city.
Yeah, we've learned that we have to order way ahead of time, just to lead time it takes to deliver on equipment, materials, whatever it is. So we're trying to get out there as soon as we can.
Okay. And just kudos to all the department, you know, directors for being on top of that, because they know what they need for their respective department. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, we do have a presentation for 5M. So whenever you're ready for that. On the Public Safety Personal Retirement System, there's a report that we have to share with you. So we'd like to review that. Can you do that now, Sam?
Great, good morning. So we're here to discuss the pension funding policy plan. This is something that we need as a city to adopt annually. So the pension funding policy plan is something for the Tier 1, Tier 2 PSPRS members. So for that plan, for our city, since we hold an unfunded liability, we are required, as a city, to adopt this pension funding policy plan. For this plan, we have to recognize and accept the current assets and liabilities, and then adopt the plan and meet the funding requirements and objectives for the, for the next fiscal year and for the plan to meet the city's set target and goal of 100% funded. So for our plan, we have a couple of minimum funding requirements that we need to meet. So the first one is to maintain the stability of contributions. And one of the things that the city has done with this is we have invested $2 million annually into a reserve fund to help ensure the stability of our contributions for the pension policy in case there's any swings in the markets or changes in assumptions and so forth. Currently, for the ending of this fiscal year, that reserve balance will be at about $12 million. And with that $2 million annual contribution. The next one is the meeting of the fund requirements. When we plan out, last year, we presented you with the updated City of Mesa Plan for the stabilization contribution. With that, you know, the city takes into account and ensures that we're able to meet these funding requirements and understand that with inflation, with salary increases and everything going up, that we need to ensure that the liability will continue to increase and that the city is financially stable to cover those contributions throughout the forecast. And then lastly, for the funding ratio target and timeline, the goal of the city is to be 100% funded for these pension plans for Tier 1, Tier 2. The timeline of that is, if you may recall, we did switch to a 30-year amortization when that was available to us. And we decided from a city plan to pay that back on a 25-year. Going into the next fiscal year will be in year 20 of that payback, that paydown of the amortization schedule. So for us, our timeline to then become 100% funded would be June 30 of 2042. So these are, on this slide, you'll see the city's current assets and liabilities of the plan. We have last year's numbers as well as this year's numbers. One thing to note about the numbers that you're accepting for this year is it is ending of June 30 of 2021. So last year, when we adopted the increase of the stabilization plan, those numbers are being contributed in fiscal year '21, '22. So they are not reflected into this number. So that's why you do see a slight increase. But only a slight increase in not, you know, the expectations of what we're doing with that. The significant investment that we're doing this year and the upcoming years to meet that stabilization level. But we did have a good investment year last year. PSPRS did have returns of 27%, approximately 27%. But with that 27%, our gains and losses, that will kind of cover a little bit in the next slides, are smoothed out over seven years. So even though we had a great year, what it does is it will help us as well offset some bad times. As we see with the market today, there will be some good times and some bad times. And that's why they do the seven-year rolling average to kind of offset some of those things.
We're being smoothed out today.
Exactly.
After last year's great year.
So currently, for the city funding strategy, so as we discussed earlier, the city is setting aside $2 million annually into the pension reserve fund to account for any swings into the market, to offset some of those losses. Additionally, with the pass of Prop 207, the marijuana tax for adult-use recreational marijuana, the city is receiving a portion of that sales tax that is being used for public safety. So the city has elected to use those dollars to help bring down the unfunded liability. So for fiscal year '21, '22, we are contributing additional $2 million to the unfunded liability with that additional sales tax that the city is receiving from this. Next year, we're projecting for the forecast to be about 2.8. We'll continue to monitor the sales tax. When it initially got rolled out from the GOV's office, they initially looked at it as a four- to five-year buildup plan. So we're seeing some stabilization in the numbers at the moment, but we'll continue to monitor that through as the receipts come in for that. And then lastly, we have the stabilization amount. So last year, we presented us bumping up and investing more upfront. As with our investments, you know, the more we provide upfront, the more time those investments have to gain interest, which then help bring down the unfunded liability. So what we have done is we've determined the smoothed-out stabilization contribution that's needed, looking at that unfunded liability piece. So from a forecasted standpoint, what we're looking at into the city's forecast is then stabilizing that payment out into the forecast at $80 million, approximately $80 million, throughout the next 20 years.
So maybe, Sam, just share with us, like, well, I guess you have a chart, right? Or somewhere, like in the last three years ago, how, what was that amount approximately?
Good question. The approximate contribution was about $60 million. And then last year, we bumped it up.
So we've been trying to move up to this 80. This is the first, this budget year will be the first year we're at the 80, I think?
Fiscal year '21, '22.
'21, '22. And that, the goal was to get to that point. And then, you know, it may adjust a little bit, but obviously, we've taken some big steps to get to the 80. But then the, the point is to get to the 80, and that becomes kind of our level point for the next 20 years. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, and the investments, so for the current fiscal year, we contributed, the city contributed additional $14 million on top of what was the projected annual contribution. And then for the upcoming budget fiscal year, it will be additional $8 million. And we'll be kind of monitoring that as well with the sales tax that the contribute, that the city is contributing to help bring down this unfunded liability.
But we've kind of, once we get to that 80, we've just stuck that into the forecast?
Correct. And one thing that we'll cover when we get into the forecast, we have trued it up with the variables similar to our sales tax to include a slight market correction, as well as some of the changes within salaries and so forth that would affect the liability itself.
So Sam and Chris, since this is a state legislative-type program, I mean, the Public Safety Retirement System. And consequently, we fall under their controls and guidelines. And, and the unfunded, the unfunded liability, obviously, we have to pay it, and we're amortizing it. So I just want everybody to know that we have very little control over what the state has done for our unfunded liability. But yet, you know, we have to meet those forecasts.
Right, that's correct.
And, and I appreciate going up to the $80 million level so that we can pay off our mortgage, basically, memorization for this unfunded liability. So it might change a little bit.
It's both the ability, and it's, it's an actuarial defined liability, meaning that it's both what exists today for those who have retired and paying off, they call it their liabilities, future payments, right? For someone who's retired. But it also assumes, make sure I'm saying this correctly, Sam, it also includes the employee currently in place today and the ability to also meet their future pension payments, right? So that's, when we talk about 100%, it's not just those that are currently retired, but it's also making the assumption of everyone else who's employed or going to be employed over that period of time. Am I saying that accurately?
Well, Tier 1 and Tier 2.
Yeah, well, sorry. I'm sorry. And that, yes, thank you. The ones that are already in that program.
Correct. And from the Tier 3, that's why we have a legacy rate that is then required on the city to contribute to help fund the Tier 1, Tier 2, as no new employees will go into those tiers.
Right, that's correct. Thank you.
So I had a question on the marijuana use tax. So the projection is that it's going to increase in our city? Because we're selling more marijuana, apparently.
So the 2 million to the 2.8 million, the, the state implemented that in March. So when we received the first sales tax receipts, it was a shortened amount of time period. So for the fiscal year '21, '22 payment that we did to the unfunded liability, it was for the sales from January to July, or January to December, essentially, which there was two, three months in there, which there was no marijuana tax. So the 2.8 brings us to the more stabilized amount of a full year.
Right, and we'll watch it and see. But the policy that we adopted, the direction from council, was to take whatever that amount is and put it into this pension liability fund.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. If, if we had directed that money to go into for the PSPRS versus any other use?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. So a couple pension plan updates. One thing to note is, which does affect the liability, from the model standpoint of the actuarial assumption, the actuarials have started to decrease the wage growth assumption from 3.5% to 3%. And the goal of it is to get down to 2%. So they're reducing it by half a percentage point until they get to that 2%. This was based on historical of what they've seen in the wage growths. Even though with inflation, some of the changes that we have implemented, we have seen higher than the 3.5%. But from a long-term view, this is what the actuary has done from the model to account for what historically the cities and state has sat around, about a 1.9%, 1.4 to 1.9% wage growth. So with that adjustment, it does add some additional liability that then adjusts the model. And then secondly, we talked about the investment return, so approximately 27%. One thing with that was it is smoothed out over the seven years, which is a good thing as well from stabilization. So there's less volatility within the rates that we see. So when we plan for those, it kind of, you hope to hit that average that PSPRS is going for. So their investment return target is 7.3%. With this 27% investment return for the current 10-year average, PSPRS is receiving, has received about 7.8% of investment return. So we can see that these types of flows of ups and downs, you know, they offset, you'll have a good year, you have a bad year. But overall, you know, you want to hit those target goals of that 7.3% for those assumptions in the model. So here's the graph of kind of showing you some of the changes. So the orange line is previously how the city used to forecast the PSPRS contribution. Taking a look at historicals, the annual increase that PSPRS contribution would increase would be about 6%. And when we were looking at the stabilization, we found that to be unsustainable to have that increase go in perpetuity into the forecast over the full life of this amortization schedule. So what we've done is we've modeled it out to then stabilize that unfunded liability payment to about $64 to $66 million. And then we then look and understand the normal cost standpoint. But with that stabilization payment, that then brings us to approximately $80 million that we then contribute on an annual basis for the next 80 years. We'll continue to monitor this as it goes through the ebbs and flows of the market. One thing to note about our models is it does include the sales tax or the market correction, similar to our sales tax forecast that was presented for the budget. So we trued that up. And then we also accounted for some additional salary increases, such as in the current, in the current fiscal year, we did the 5% increase for, increase for everyone, and then also for the upcoming merit increases as well that are in the budget. So we take those wage growths into account when modeling out to ensure that our $80 million stabilization payment is the correct amount. And then, as, as we know, Chris, it is good to note from an investment standpoint, the city has contributed a significant amount for this fiscal year and the next fiscal year as we come to kind of meet that $80 million compared to the prior actuarial schedules. So currently, projecting to the current fiscal year, that was additional $14 million. And going to the next fiscal year, projected additional $8 million that the city's contributed. So the last slide here is just kind of a graph to depict how both plans are moving through the amortization schedule with that $80 million contribution, and how we look to meet our funding percentage goal of 100% by June 30 of 2042. So for the next steps, this will be on the council agenda for June 6. And we're looking to get the pension funding policy adopted. And then we'll get that posted for the next fiscal year.
Councilmember Luna, I have a question.
Maybe, Chris. Are, as far as our civilian personnel, are they on PSPRS or are they on ASRS?
ASRS.
Okay, so what is the percentage of that? Do you know?
Where is funded at? Last time I thought, it was like 79?
They were in the seven, like, low 70s.
Low 70s.
Yeah.
They're, they're doing much better. But it's something we have to watch, but we're not under the same challenge that we have here.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Spilsbury.
I'm just going to ask this. I don't, looking at the chart with the prior forecast and then the stabilization payment, I just, can you explain that a little? How, how is that possible that we thought we were going to be paying $200 million?
Well, that would be if we paid just like the minimum amount each year.
Okay, so it's like paying your principal off earlier or whatever, like if.
Yeah, so the way, yeah, in a way, what it does, that was just the schedule that said, if we just paid, again, the absolute minimum each year, which is, which in some years was actually not enough, we were falling behind. And so it's just, it was just showing us that schedule. Because, whatever, five, six, seven years ago, that's all we could pay, right? It was just, we were lucky to be able to pay the minimum amount. And that's why we chose the 25, 30, whatever year schedule, because we were just in a position where it was difficult to fund anything more. But in the last, within the last five years, in the last three years, we said, listen, I, you know, thinking the economy had turned around, we recognized that, you know, by just paying the minimum payment, we're actually going to be, at the end of the day, paying a lot more.
Right.
But, you know, the hard thing is, you're also writing a big check, and you're sending it, as Councilman Freeman said, to another group that we don't really have a lot of control over, and they're investing that money. So it's not necessarily just paying off their current obligations, but it's paying that plus it's accumulating into their investments that they then work to, you know, get into some, sorry, an assumed return that, you know, we hope benefits us. So, but that's why we kind of said, wait a minute, this is, I mean, obviously, looking down the road, I realize, you know, we either pay a lot more now, or it'll be, it'll essentially wipe out, you know, the general fund, you know, 10, 15 years from now. So, anyway, so this is the plan. We, and we've had, you know, you hear, you think about how much changes we've made in the rest of the budget when we went through it. And, you know, in the last two years, was it been $22 million or more?
So up to '22, '23, it would be $22 million.
Yeah, so it's been a huge, inside the budget itself, all the things that are going on, this has been one of the biggest commitments we've made. But by doing that and kind of building up to that point, to your point, kind of getting to that mortgage payment that's flat and predictable, even though it's a big number, we feel like it's a lot easier to plan around that number than the, than the escalating number.
Well, yeah, if we're like at $200 million in 2040, but we're only going to be paying 80 now, like, that's a huge, massive difference.
So I just hope the city manager 20 years from now will go, "Thank you so much, Mr. Brady. That was an amazing idea."
You're not going to be here then?
20 years from now? That'd be tough. I don't think you want me around.
Okay, I just was trying to kind of figure out how in the world that happened, looking at a graph like that.
Yeah, and to add to that, it's really, we took the historical, and it was inflated by 6% a year.
Sorry, what did you say, Sam?
No, sorry. So looking at the orange line, it's really looking at how we forecasted, and we took the factor of a 6% increase annually based upon those historicals. So once you put that out and compound that over 20 years, it looks dramatic, which is why we felt we needed to make a type of move like we did with the stabilization.
Any other?
Madam, Madam Vice Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor, please go ahead.
Thank you. You know, this is, this is exciting to see a 27% return on this. That's, that's not what we're used to seeing from PSPRS investments. And I think the way that we got into this, you know, a rearage, this unfunded liability situation in the first place had to do with, with poor returns on the investments. It seems like this year is not, the stock market is not doing very well. And there's speculation that, you know, the inflation we're seeing right now is going to result in a recession. And, you know, it might be a few years where we don't have good returns on our investments. So how, how might that impact this discussion?
Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor, the current model that we have with the forecast, we do a slight correction currently. So we were predicting some change in the market. So it depends on how severe, which we can't depict at the moment. But what we tried to do was showcase some, some change in the market. So yes, the 27% will help. But, and the way that they do that is they spread that out over the seven years. So the losses that we may see this year or for the next two, three years, those losses will be offset with some of the gains that we've received in the current fiscal year.
So Sam, what's the assumed rate throughout the seven years?
So the assumed, the assumed rate of return? So what we have in our model is we're doing the 27% that we receive currently, and then we go into a 7.3%, a 0%, a 3%, a 3%, a 10%, and then back to a 7.3%.
So we're correcting that 27 down quite a bit in the future years, Mayor. So we try to build into our assumption a much lower rate in the, in the future, recognizing that, you know, this 27% is not sustainable. And then we just look out in the future years, and it's not even, you know, you have some years you're seeing zero.
Correct.
So, yeah, so we can absorb some losses if we need to, at least during that period of time. The idea is, I think, to try to smooth that out over a period of time and realize some years, hopefully, you'll have some 27s, but you may have some much less than that. But hopefully, it's kind of like anything in the stock market, in your investments, you're trying to look long-term and see what that actually looks like over a period of time.
Correct, and that's why we monitor that 10-year average, which is currently at the 7.8%. There's always going to be the ebbs and flows of the market, but we have to look at this from the 20-year amortization. So even though we see a slowdown or a possible recession coming into the market now, there's going to be something that'll probably pop up 10 years from now, too. So we continue to monitor just to ensure from a 10-year average that we're meeting those overall goals. And that's part of why they have set in place some of the new policies of that smoothing, and then also amortizing those gains and losses throughout, you know, a 15-year schedule, just so there's less volatility on the contributions of the city.
Thank you.
Most has other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor, are there other items on Monday's agenda you'd like to cover before we go into the special meeting agenda? I do have a one question. I have to bring it up. On 4G, I don't know if RJ or Scott Boucher, on street sweepers, I see that we're making an. another purchase, and again, I just wanted to inquire, for electric options or CNG, is there anything on the market that we could consider, or even going forward, and what's happening with that? Especially the price of fuel, and let alone the emissions.
Vice Mayor, Mayor members of the council, yes, there is an electric option on the market. It is significantly more expensive than the model we're looking to buy, the traditional sweeper. I believe we're at about three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for the current recommendation. The numbers are going up, but I would say it's gonna be between two-thirds higher or double. We got a quote about two weeks ago for a sweeper for seven-hundred-thousand dollars for an electric version. Scott Boucher and I have been talking, and as he works on a plan to potentially move part of his fleet out to the, our east facility, there is potential for CNG, compressed natural gas. So, we are open to that, but we don't have infrastructure currently for either compressed natural gas or electric, so this is a recommendation for a traditional, you know, diesel-fueled piece of equipment.
Infrastructure, where they're located now, right? Because we are running our, our trash and other city...
Correct, but that, those are being used for Mr. Boucher's department, so the transportation department doesn't have any infrastructure at either facility right now, and that is something we're discussing.
And I assume we're looking at the long-term, I don't know what the life expectancy for a sweeper is, whether it's ten years, twenty years...
Eight to ten years is what the life expectancy is, yes.
With maintenance, the cost of fuel, things like that.
I mean, today, just in terms of dollars, if you're looking at it that way, I would say there's not a return, we would not make a return, because of how, you know, if we're looking to pay twice as much for an electric sweeper, we're not gonna, we're not gonna recapture that in fuel savings or operational costs. So hopefully, with technology, you know, costs come down over time, but we're not seeing that with equipment right now, you know, that's for sure. There were a few cities that bought the type of sweeper that we're looking at, but the numbers have gone up considerably since then.
I hope, hope that changes on the market, because it certainly brings us closer to our climate action goals, as well as, I understand that electric vehicles have less maintenance, and which is a factor also.
Yeah, one of the things we're not sure of is how well an electric sweeper would do in this environment. So we're, we're trying to watch what some other cities are doing. It's, it's an intense use, you know, and, and the heat that we have, you know, I'd, I'd like to see a little more history with an electric sweeper before we made such a big commitment.
Yeah, I think Scott still bought one a year or two ago.
They did not. They decided not to buy the sweeper.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, it was in the news, so they didn't proceed.
That's my understanding.
So we don't have any in the valley or that we're aware of?
Vice Mayor, I'm not aware of any in the valley currently.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay, thank you very much, RJ.
You're welcome.
But we are getting an electric fire truck.
Yes, we are getting an electric fire truck, and I can't wait for it to arrive.
Between a sweeper and a fire truck, I get the sweeper to work harder.
Okay, I think that's it for the regular agenda for Monday, so now we'll go through the special council meeting on Monday's agenda, and it's to, see, we have a couple of items on that agenda. The first part is conduct a public hearing on the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three secondary property tax levy, and take action on that budget.
So, Vice Mayor, we do, because this, I think, the first opportunity we have with the public hearing, we do have a presentation, unless there's other questions on this item, for the property tax levy.
Okay.
So you would have that before the public hearing. Would you like to have that now?
Do you, are you expecting to do it today?
Yeah, we would like to do it today before...
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Just more numbers, I, I don't, I'm trying to please you over here a little bit, Ryan's here.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council. I'm Ryan Wimmer from the Financial Services Department, here to talk about the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three secondary property tax levy. There are two types of property tax. The city doesn't have a primary property tax to fund operations, but we do, the city does have a secondary property tax to fund the debt service on general obligation bonds that are approved by voters. And that's what we're gonna talk about today, the secondary property tax. The formula for property tax, it's, you know, property tax in Arizona is, is a complicated thing, but the formula's pretty, in its simplest form, it's pretty simple. It's just property value that the assessor comes up with, the county assessor, for each property, times a tax rate equals a tax levy, and the, and the tax levy is the amount that we need, the, the amount of revenue that we need to pay our general obligation bond debt payment. So first, we wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening with property values in Mesa, and as you've probably noticed, over the last decade, the trend is, is a good one, it's upward. There's two values that the, the assessor comes up with for each property, it's the full cash value, which is that blue line, and that kind of follows the market price, it's not the market price, but it, it follows the market price. And then there's a limited value, which is that, those green bars, and that's, that has a, it's limited, as, as the name implies, to, to dampen the effect of any major changes in, in, in the property value. So you don't get big swings in your, in your property value that's taxed each year. And the, the green bar, the limited value is what's used for property tax calculations. So, one, one thing to note on these values is that there's a two-to-three-year delay from the time a property is valued to the time it's used for taxes, and so these values are, the newest values are still from a couple of years ago, and so you, you don't yet see the, the major increases that we've experienced in the last couple of years from the real estate boom that we've been experiencing here and across the country. So, this, this slide just shows the change in taxable property value. So, between this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and next fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, so if you look at that table, the change, the total change in taxable property value is two-hundred-and-forty-four million, or six-point-one percent. Of that, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, the top row is appreciation of existing property, so four percent of that six percent is from appreciation, but eighty-six million or two-point-one percent of that increase in taxable property value is from new property, meaning construction, development, annexation, purchase of, of equipment in major commercial facilities. So it's, it's really development that's, that's driving that. I, I just think it's noteworthy that more than a third of the new taxable property value in the city next year is gonna be from, from new property. So now discussing the levy, so the amount that we need to collect to pay the debt service, the, next year's proposed levy is, we're proposing to set it at a level that funds annual debt payments for several years, but that may need to be increased once all the bonds authorized by voters in two thousand eighteen and in two thousand twenty have been sold. So this is a, a decrease, we're proposing a levy that's less than the, than the current year, which is the prior year, because of, for several reasons, and these are those numbered items down below. The, the first one, and the main one, is the timeframe. So reducing the levy from the prior year, it better aligns the levy with the progress of the bond programs, and, you know, when we come up with the bond programs, we, we, we are, you know, we're optimistic about the completion, and we wanna be, because we wanna go as fast as possible with them, but we assumed with this recent bond programs, a four-to-five-year assumption of the timeframe to complete those programs, and we're, we're seeing that the, the timeline is actually more around the six-to-eight-year timeframe. For example, the two thousand eight voter-approved bonds, I'm sorry, the two thousand eighteen bond election of public safety and parks, thirty-one percent of those bonds have been sold since, in the four years since that election, and in the two years since the two thousand twenty bond election, only three percent of those bonds have been sold. So you can see, we're not, we're not on track to complete those bond programs in four-to-five years, it's really a, a longer term, and, and I think that's not unusual, projects take time, and there's all kinds of factors going into that, but we, we just wanna recognize with the levy that those, those original assumptions of four-to-five years are, are not, we, we wanna better align those assumptions with the actual time the bond programs are, are taking to progress. In addition to the timeframe, there's also savings that we, we wanna have savings in our assumptions, because we don't wanna end up on the other side of it, we wanna have conservative assumptions on interest rates and collection rates, and so we have some savings from those assumptions, and we also have a healthy reserve balance in our general obligation debt service fund. And so we feel, we feel comfortable with reducing the levy we're recommending for next fiscal year.
So, Mayor, Council, what, in the past, we had to set a, a specific levy, and really the rate, to make, which used the assumption of how fast we were gonna need the money, what the interest rate might be, and what we found is, and, you know, why have projects not, not gone as fast? Well, I'll, I'll give you an example, the public safety complex in northeast Mesa, well, just finding the land, and we found some land with light, but it, we didn't have a willing seller, so it took us an extended period of time to eventually acquire that land. Sometimes on street projects, we will have a portion of this coming from the general fund, some of it may be coming from MAG, well, then we have to follow a federal process, and that sometimes will, well, more than likely, slow the projects down. Also, most recently, we found that some of the projects, because of where we are today, the inflation, the projects have been, we don't have enough money of the two thousand eighteen bonds, we've had to wait and find other sources to get it. So, that's part of the dilemma, or part of the, the cons, being very conservative in our estimations, and so when we established that rate, we made the assumption those projects were gonna come online pretty regularly, over about a five-year period is usually what we made the assumption. So when that doesn't happen, then we're setting a rate previous to that, that made the assumption we were gonna need the money sooner, and it didn't happen. So, as a result, we have accumulated some reserves, which is not a bad thing, but it's gotten to the point where we said, you know, we don't need that, that's more than we, we really need, it's not something that's that important, we don't expect major changes in property tax values, as you can see, our values are very healthy going on to the future, so the risk that even with a recession and a drop, or drop in values, we still have a lot of cushion in between that blue and that green line. So that, we said, let's look at a way to maybe reduce the, the tax rate, the tax levy, and we, but we didn't wanna do it for one year, and then have to come back the next year and go back up, so I think you'll talk about this, we wanted to look for, so we could do this over a period of time, but eventually, as we continue to sell debt into the future, eventually we'll have to come back up, but we do think there is a period of time going forward for the next, what do we, three years, four years, that we can bring that rate down, provide some savings to our residents for at least the next three to four years.
Mr. Brady, regarding that, you know, bringing it down, I understand, and, and it's certainly a help with the increased housing prices, but are, is there a concern that as we go forward, our rate assumptions and the costs that maybe even on two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty, is dramatically different maybe than our estimation, that we'll be able to, I mean, what happens on a eighteen project or a twenty project? And then because of rate or inflationary costs or something?
Right.
We don't have the funds to...
No, it's a great question. So there's two parts to this, really. We know what we're authorized to sell, because we have to go to the voters, right? The voters have to approve the total dollar amount that we can levy, that we can collect the levy for. That's a known number, right? The projects are over here trying to get done, and there's all kinds of pressures and variables that impact that, as you're suggesting, right? Inflation, property values, whatever. But, you know, it's a fixed amount on the authorization. So if sometimes we're short on the bond authorization, sometimes we've, and we've done that recently, we've come to council and say, we need to supplement the bonds, the capital bonds that are being paid for by the property tax, with maybe additional sales tax dollars that we're collecting in this, you know, good economy. So we're able to match that up and sometimes meet that need. Or, another example, is the police evidence facility, right? We came to you and said, that was in the twenty eighteen bond package, and then as we're going through that development, and then we come back, and the prices are, you know, much higher than we expected, so included in the, so that, to resolve that, as we've come, we're coming to you, I think, on the agenda, to add additional dollars to that same project in this coming bond program. So, I, I don't know if that's answering your question, but that's how we deal with it, so that, what we're doing with dealing with property tax, secondary property tax, there's a lot more known variables about, we know what the authorization is, we know what that debt service is gonna be, to a certain degree, because if we, we, you know, really it's just a matter of how fast we're gonna need the money, what the interest rate might be, and that fluctuation, might, I think I'm hitting all the numbers. So, if we go to the next slide, slide six, you can kind of see, there's not a whole lot we could adjust, with the, the authorization is the authorization, we can't, so we have to build that into the model. So it, our model becomes more predictable. What happened, and why we're coming back lower, is what happened is projects took longer, so we weren't issuing as much debt, we weren't selling as much debt as we had originally thought. The interest rates were coming at, for the last three years, not this year, three years came in much lower than our assumed, I think we went into the assumption of five percent is what we were using before, he never likes to admit to this, but he's always...
It used to be five percent, we've, we've, we've brought it in a little bit.
Yeah, so, anyway, so we were higher than we needed, so when we were selling the bonds to pay the debt, we were getting really good returns, and so all those compounded, and to your point, I think we've managed this, that we've looked at the current authorizations that are out there, and the good news is, I think, to a large degree, I don't know where the fest is still here, I think we've identified all the projects in the twenty eighteen programs, they're, they're to the point where they've been through design, I think most of them have CMRs, so we're in a better position to say, we have a better idea of what that cost is actually gonna be, so that helps, I don't know what else I...
Isn't there, you, aren't we limited on how much we can have in our reserve as well?
That's true, true, too, right, so we can't only build up that reserves as much, and if we get it to that cap by state law, then whatever we collect, we end up paying, paying our debt down early, which is fine, but sometimes we're paying it so quickly, we're, you know, two years later, we're paying more interest, and it's not using it as the most effective tool in debt planning. So all we're saying is, frankly, we've had some really good years, slower than, you know, the projects have been slowed down a little bit, but we've also collected more than we, or dollars have come in in a good way, and we just think there's a period of time, even assuming the current sale in November, right, we've built that in, to this assumption of the rate and what we're gonna need.
So the current sale just happened, is happening...
Not the sale, the current, the next authorization, sorry, the next authorization. That's already built into this reduction, is that correct?
We'll see that in a couple of slides.
Right.
But that'll, yeah, that would hit in a few years as well.
But we know that we can reduce it now, for a couple of years.
Right.
And that's already built into the assumption.
Yes.
So, I, I don't know if that answers, I'm sorry, but there's just, there's a lot of pieces going on here, but we, we just felt like we're at a point where it makes, we were in a position where we could come to you and say, hey, we think we could reduce this rate. What I don't like doing is playing the rate down and up and down and up, because I think it creates all kinds of headlines, and people get confused, so if we were gonna lower it, we wanted to be able to do it for some period of time before it had to come back up.
I think it just tells a great story, too, like, we've done well, we have money, we can pass it back off to our constituents who are struggling right now with all of their increased expenses and everything, so I think it's great that we've been able to figure out how to do that.
Please go ahead, Ryan.
Thanks. So on this chart, we wanted to show you the forecasted, so this is the next ten years, well, includes this year, but what we were planning to do with the levy, forecasting to do with the levy previously, was to keep it at about the forty-five million dollar range that we set it at last year, until all the bonds got issued from the eighteen and twenty bond elections, and just keep it flat from year to year. What, what we're proposing to do under this adjusted forecast is, like, like Chris said, to drop it to about thirty-nine million, have it there for a few years, and then, as, as the debt gets issued, it'll build up and up, and we'll catch up in a few years, and we'll have to increase, we, we may need to increase it again. There's, there are conservative assumptions still built into all this that may allow us not, not to have to increase as much as we think we might have to, and there's a lot of factors that change, like Chris said, constantly, so, but we know we could, we think we could leave it at the lower thirty-nine million dollar range for a few years without any issues. So that's, that's the approach we've taken in the proposed, all, all you're approving with the levy is the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed. with the levy is the fiscal year 22, 23 proposed levy amount. And we'll look at that in just a minute here. That's, here it is. So the, this shows a comparison from this fiscal year, fiscal year 21, 22, to next fiscal year 22, 23, what we're proposing. That, that top row, the taxable property value, that's what we looked at in the prior slide, that 244 million, it increased by 6%. The levy that we're talking about reducing is in that middle row, tax levy, it goes from 45 million to 38.8 million, which is a $6.4 million reduction, a 14% reduction. And the tax rate, which is just a function of, it's just the math, it, it gets reduced as well, obviously, from, by about 19%. And so the annual cost to the median homeowner goes down by about $25 or 15%. You know, and I think in a time of inflation and increasing costs, it's a, like Chris said, it's a, it's an opportunity to reduce costs across the city for, for everyone a little bit and, and, and help out a little bit in this, this time, and also keep us in a good financial position with the property tax.
Ryan, just a second.
Ryan, what determines the tax rate? How does that fluctuation happen?
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, basically, there's the formula down there below that, if you look at that formula, the value times the rate equals the levy. So we don't determine the values, right? That just happens, we, we figure out, we figure out how much we need for the levy, and then we, we just back into that tax rate.
So the tax levy is the debt payment, debt service payment. We know what that is.
Right.
The property value is given to us by the county. So then it becomes a formula, right? That the tax levy, that we know the property value is, we have to determine what's the rate to make the payment. So.
Property value divided by tax levy.
Yeah. So we, in the past, that levy was a little bit higher, and that's where we're talking about, why we were collecting a little bit more than we needed. And as a result of all those other factors, we said, hey, we can reduce that levy amount down a little, still make our payments on debt service. And so that, that's why we're proposing. So the good news is, whether you talk about it with someone about your property tax rates going down by almost 20%, or what they, the median, you have to be careful because people are going to be all over the place, but at least that you can say the median homeowner will see a reduction of 15%. So however that conversation you're having with someone, you can use those numbers.
I have a question about that, then. If we're two to three years behind on the property value, is it the median cost that it was two to three years ago or currently? Do those numbers match up?
But it's what you're paying today, but it's, it's the value that.
So same, so we would, our, our median rate of our house would also still be two to three years behind as well.
Yeah.
Correct?
It's what you're getting in your notice is.
Because if that's your property value notice.
Yes.
Okay.
And the real assessor says you.
Yeah.
So that would also be two to three years behind.
Yes. Yeah, and we, and we have those values, we, in the council report, we have those values, but yes, they are two to three years.
I mean, because obviously we've seen a huge increase in the median cost of a house in the last two, three years.
But we'll see, that'll keep coming.
So that would come in another two to three years.
Yes.
But it's also limited by the 5%.
Yes, at the end of the day, we can only, our, the part, the property value that we can assess the rate on, is capped at a 5%.
Yes.
So it'll only grow, even if the blue goes up 7%, we can only go up.
But the median cost of our home is not limited to the 5%. So your house could skyrocket up and you'd have to pay.
Right, but what, but what we can assess on the levy, or assess on the rate is all, is capped.
I'm just saying, your, if the tax rate's your tax rate and your house price goes way high in two to three years, you're going to end up paying more because your house went up.
On the assessment, the, your property value assessment that you receive from the assessor is capped at a 5% increase annually.
But for our house?
Regardless if your price, if your house doubles or whatever.
You'll see a couple of different things on the little card, right? The little card will show you the limited value and the.
Full cash value.
The cash value. So you'll see the cash value, oh, I'm a millionaire.
And we're only going to pay, we also only pay on the limited, just like we can only use the limited for, okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Heredia.
That was my question, and so we anticipated, because they're two to three years behind, we anticipate next two, three years be kind of similar, similar stance here that it could be folks saving eventually, or is that, is that a correct statement? That at the end of the day, we could have the annual costs to median homeowner, a savings, maybe not to the extent that we're seeing now, but some sort, based on the taxable property value, seems like there's a, the, the amount there with the growth in the, in the values of current homeowners is helping us kind of bridge that gap. It has an outsourced, like, effect on this, this equation, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia. Yeah, so as values increase, and this is, yeah, this is a good question, and you're all kind of asking a similar question, as values increase and we're collecting the same levy, the rate goes down. And so it's kind of like a net effect. Your value goes up, but your rate goes down, so you pay a similar amount, but you actually pay less because the new property coming on the rolls spreads the cost across more properties. So what happens is, you tend, the same property, if you collect the same levy, the same property's going to pay a little less each year, because even though the value's going up, the rate's going down, and there's more property coming on the rolls.
So that's why we always, you hear us talk, we always focus on the levy, you know, the median, I focus on rate, but what we're saying on charts, on slide six, is we're going to hold that levy amount at 38.8 million. So if during that same period of time, your property values continue to grow, we're probably, we're going to come back and say, we only need 38.8, values went up, so we can bring rates down. So, but again, we don't, we try not to get into that big conversation about rate, because we're saying what we actually, it's the 38.8 that's important to us.
But how, do you equate the, the new growth? How do you create new growth that we're, I'm envisioning the next five years, we're still growing.
Yeah. So it'll, it'll affect the rate, will continue to drop even more, right? Because we only need to generate the 38.8.
Sure.
Values keep going up higher, then that rate can be lower to get to that 38.8.
Sure.
Whether it's new construction or amortization of existing properties.
Okay.
We're not going to increase the levy or the debt service amount that we need to pay.
Does the new construction affect the, the property value collection differently than what's already, what's already built? How's, how's that, how's that play into the, as, as new construction comes in, like, how's that affect with the growth of the already property value of current homeowners? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Vice Mayor, Councilmember, yeah, as the new property comes on, you can, it, it broadens the base of property that's available, and so it's going to, it's just going to spread that cost over more taxpayer, more property, more, more property value.
It has the effect of reducing the rate.
Reducing.
Yeah, and you can kind of see this in the last column, the percent change. As property values go up that plus 6%, that, if you kept the levy the same, the rate would go down approximately 6%. And as the levy changes, the rate also changes. So you can see that, if you added that 14% and that 6%, it, it totals to about that 20% of the tax rate decrease. So as values go up, the rate goes down if you're collecting the same levy. And, and just one other comment on the, the median homeowner, what we see is that every year, the, the median homeowner changes, right? It's not the same, not the same guy every year. It might be, you know, me one year and Councilmember Spilsbury next year because she lives in a nicer house.
Oh.
I've never seen her house, but.
Obviously.
So, yeah, but, yeah, so because what's happening is, the new property that's coming on the rolls is at the upper end, it's above the median, right? So it's pulling the median up every year. So all those Eastmark homes coming on, they're all above the median, right? There's none of them that are going to be on the bottom.
On these big commercial projects that are coming online, they're certainly helping that tax base, right? Because then it just adds more to that taxable value, which allows us, we don't change the, we're not changing the levy, right? It does affect the rate coming down. So that's how we manage it. So unlike a primary property tax where some may never adjust, they may keep the rate the same and let the values grow with it, and that means you're collecting more. Here we know what the amount we're collecting, so we're fixed on that number. We do have reserves in addition to the levy, I want to be clear about that, but that is a fixed amount. So it makes it a little more, I guess, formulaic, that it helps us to establish a formula for this.
So the new properties coming into the property tax roll, those are assessed at current market values versus if you've had your home for a while, you're limited at the 5%.
Right, there you go, right.
So those greater values are really contributing to what we're able to clock. So word to the wise, buy an old house.
Or even if you're buying a house, right? When you buy it new, it goes on the rolls what you bought it, not.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Even though, okay.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're new property owner, you're buying it, and you've now paying $200,000 more than what the person had it on the rolls for, you're going to, that's going to become your new base.
So don't move.
Well.
All right, there's how to save money. And so does the levy also include the interest rate that we're paying, the finance rate? Okay.
Vice Mayor, yes, yes, it does. And, and you're right, the interest rates have come up, and, and we have, we've always assumed they were going to come up, and so it's not a problem for us, because we've always kind of assumed the worst, and that's, that's what's been happening, yeah.
And this chart includes the public safety?
We made, we've built in there for this new authorization.
I mean, it's on the ballot in November, but by the time it's exercised, I don't even know if it'll be impacted within the 22, 23 budget year.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll look at that on the next slide.
Okay.
In fact, why don't we do that? So the adjusted plan that we looked at, that solid green line is the adjusted plan, we just looked at on the two slides ago. The green dotted line is what happens if the $157 million public safety bond election question passes in November. The debt will, the more projects will be happening, more debt will be issued, we'll, we'll need to increase it a little sooner, and more, obviously, to pay for it. But we can still keep it where it is for a couple of years, probably as that program gets started.
So we don't see really an increase in the levy rate until, as it's projected now, based on what we know, the 24, 25, when we're starting to exercise using those funds?
Yeah, it'll be 25, 26.
Assuming that they're approved by the voters.
Yeah, about three years from now, somebody, we'll have to have that conversation.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Continue.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. And, yeah.
There's a lot of things that could happen, so.
Yeah, and if I could just clarify one thing that was discussed previously, when a new property is purchased, even if it's like a new home, the assessor's office doesn't value it at the price, based on the price, the, the sale price, or the current market, or the current value, they take a, a ratio of the existing property in that area, similar ratio of the full cash value and limited value, and they, they apply it to that new property. And so if you, if you buy any property, whether it's new or existing, it won't reset to the higher, to the full value. It, it still has that difference between the full cash and limited based on similar properties in the area. And it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of fair.
But it's more than what it was originally, what it's initially, what was before the sale, what it was assessed at, is that right?
It probably depends on the property.
Well, just generally based on what's happening in the market, most likely it's going to be higher?
Well, it, I guess the, the, the point is, it doesn't really reset. It, it still gets, the gap that's there is applied to the, to the property that's sold in a similar ratio to the other properties around it. So the, so assessor's office is more sophisticated than that in that they, they try to keep that gap there for everyone when a property is sold, instead of allowing it to reset as properties are sold.
So it's more equitable?
Yeah.
I mean, that there's not drastic differences between you and your neighbor?
And your neighbor, right.
Okay.
Right, so they, they do apply that ratio when they, when a property is, a new property comes on or it's sold, yeah.
Okay.
So this is, this chart shows the, looking back now, what we, what has been the, the levy and the rate. The levy is the blue, are the blue bars, and the rate is the red line. And so you can see, and this is maybe a good illustration of what we were talking about earlier, for the first four years there, the levy was kept flat, but the rate decreased because property values were increasing. And that's what happens, that we were just talking about. And then in, with the 2018 bond election, we bumped up the levy and the rate. And then again, in 2020, last year, or last year for the 2020 bond election. So the last bar on that chart, the 22, 23 proposed, is this year, you can see it's a drop in the levy and in the rate. And the levy is the lowest in the last four years, you can see, and the rate is the last, is the lowest on this chart in the last eight years. So I think it's a good, it's a good story. So the rest of the schedule for this year on the budget and the property tax levy, on Monday, there'll be a public hearing on the budget and tax levy, and then you'll adopt, you'll consider adoption of the final budget, or final adoption of the annual budget. And then on June 20th, two weeks later, you will consider adoption of the secondary property tax levy. Thank you, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ryan.
Madam Vice Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan, great presentation. And I, I think you answered the question I had, which is, this is, you know, the context here is, is that we are also anticipating going to the voters here in November for a new, an additional public safety sales tax for two new fire stations and some additional capital expenditures for public safety. And I know when we, when we prepare the publicity pamphlet for that election, we're going to have to, to very specific, you know, law requires that we state, if you vote for this, you're, you know, the average homeowner, which I think we said is $160,000 right now, your, your secondary property tax will increase by X number of dollars. And what I think I heard you say is that the, the $25 annual decrease that, that we're expecting because of these, these decreases that, that you're, you're proposing, that already calculates in what the increase would be, what, what the additional assessment's going to need to be to cover that, that new sales, that, that new public safety tax bonded. Is that correct? So in, in other words, when, when that publicity pamphlet is prepared, it will say, if you vote yes, the average property owner will pay X number of dollars more, but we can say, however, you'll be paying, if you vote yes, you'll still be paying $25 less than you were previously.
Monday.
Do you see what, you're, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We take it.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Mayor, that, that's a, a good point. So for this year, for next year, the, the action you're taking on Monday, regardless, you know, whether the bond election passes or not, it, it's not affected, obviously, because it's after that. In the pamphlet, we, we have to prepare and state the rate impact that we expect over the 25-year life of the bonds, and as well as the impact of the median homeowner. So both, yeah, both those statements can be true, because this, this year, we're reducing the levy based on the prior bond elections, and then that bond program in 2022 still will have those increases eventually. You can see, you know, that dotted line does go up eventually, just not, in the past, we would have adjusted the levy immediately the year after for the full amount, and we're, we're saying we're not going to do that anymore. We're going to just slowly, gradually increase the levy as the debt is issued, and eventually, eventually that impact will be felt based on.
Ryan, what is the number, the assumed number that it will, that it'll have to go up?
For the 2022 election?
The projected, yeah, for the anticipated new bond package.
Yeah, so it's $43 for the median homeowner, as, that's the median homeowner this, this year, once all the debt's issued in like eight years, yeah. So $43 is going to be the impact.
How do you tell that to, I mean, how do you explain that you're getting a $25, sorry? How do you explain then you're getting a $25 decrease, but then eventual $43 increase? Is that how you say it?
It's just, yeah, well, because it's new.
New debt.
It's the new debt, right? We can't hold this levy forever when it's still issue new debt, so.
But like, so they would, they would see a $25 decrease for the next two years for sure, but then maybe in three, four, it might go up.
It'll start gradually going up.
But gradually.
Four, three is eight, 10 years out into the future.
Do we say that usually, like, we just say it would be an increase, so they're going to assume like this year instead of like in eight years? Why don't we tell them that?
Well, I'm trying to think of the pamphlet words that we can.
Yeah, so the, I think the timing is important because this year, the, the, the package, the bond election could fail, and like, the, the bond, bond election doesn't really impact this year's levy because.
Right.
We're saying, based on what we already have approved and have, we can lower it.
Okay.
And then if the bond election passes, that's what the pamphlet's saying, if you approve this, if you vote on, you know, if it passes, then this will be the impact to over, and the way it stated is, over the life, over the life of the bonds. And we put a schedule in there that has.
Okay.
The whole 25 years of, of the, of the life of the bonds, and then averages out the impact over those 25 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my, my question was that when, when, when we said that this next authorization is built into the assumptions, that's the, that's the upcoming public safety bond election, and that's the, an average $43 increase to the average property owner. So it is, if you vote for this, your bill's going to go up $43, but please remember it went down $25. Is that where we're at?
Yeah, I think I'm going to say it's going to go down $25, and if you approve the bonds, it could go, it'll be another 43 later on, yeah.
Once all the bonds are.
Once all the bonds are.
Are issued.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, this is why sometimes we hesitated dropping the number because sometimes going back up, but I think, yeah, the, and every time we put the publicity pamphlet out there, we have a number, right? It won't be the first time. So we, I can't remember what we said last time in 2018, but there was a number out there. And so it'll be 43 is what the pamphlet, I think 43 or so it'll be about.
Yeah, so the, the pamphlet requires, it's required by state statute, it's a rate. It, it, last time it was 18 cents on the $100 million package. So it's kind of hard to translate that, but the, the package requires a property tax rate impact estimate. And then it also, on a separate page, it has various values of property, 100,000 and 250,000 for commercial, residential, different types of property, where you say, this is, this, this is what the impact would be. And that's where they would see the approximately $43 impact.
So the, I think the answer, hard again, and I know we're trying to, and I appreciate it because I think it's important for the council bill to say how they say this, but for the next three years, what we're anticipating is that number will drop by $25 for the next three years. With the sell, then if the sell of the new bonds is approved in November, then, you know, years out and, you know, beyond that, some, at some period, five, six years out, the most that increase will be, will be another, will be on top, will be a $43 on top of that. So am I saying that right? So, yeah, so you get 25 years, or not 25 years, sorry, you get three years of it being down, dropping to 40, or dropping by 25, and then it goes, it'll eventually go up by 43. But the good news is, there's been a period of time where it's been less. I don't know, that's probably not, I need to work on that, but that's, that's what we're going to do.
I guess my, my, my point is that, and everyone has said it, there's a good story here.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out how to articulate it, even, but, but be very transparent at the same time, you know, so that people know that for, A, in that increase of $18, you know, 43 minus 25, we can really do a lot. And you can trust us because, look, here's the tax rates over the last several years, and it's a downward trend. And because of the economic development that's been occurring in our community, property values are increasing. You know, we've got these big commercial projects that are literally, you know, several of them are multi-billion dollar projects. And, and so that, that wraps into the story that I think we need to tell, which is a very positive story.
Agreed.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, as, how is this, how will it change? How will the levies change as we pay off debt? Because over that three years, even though we're issuing new debt, we're also paying off existing debt, correct?
Right, and so we try to have level payments going out for the 20, 25 years. So, so it, it doesn't escalate, I mean, for each authorization, we try to build in a, get to a level point. Is that fair, Ryan? And we try to, we try to maintain a smooth levy eventually, even with new issuances out into the future. Is that fair to say that way?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so, but obviously, as we, now, we're paying off debt every year, right? But as we issue debt, I mean, we've only been issuing second, I mean, only, but we've been issuing secondary property tax only since 2008, right? So we still are probably, I'm assuming there's, I mean, we, I don't know where we are with that 2008 debt, but, you know, eventually you start paying off that debt from prior authorizations, but you're also adding new authorizations in. So we try to be careful over time that we get to a point and create a level payment going out into the future. But if you look at each, each cell, we try, we do try to manage that within the overall debt service and try to keep, get to a plateau, right, Ryan? Isn't that what I charge you to do for us? And you work with our financial advisors on that. Maybe you can explain it better.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good question. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, yeah, the, the, like you said, the debt is being paid, some of it's being paid off each year from the last 20 years, because before we had a property tax levy, we still had general obligation debt. We were just paying for it with the general fund. So there's, there's debt that's being paid off every year. Like Chris said, the first time we've used secondary property tax was in 2009, it was approved for fiscal, because there was a 2008 bond election where we said we were going to start using it. So fiscal year nine, 10 was the first time there was debt issued, paid for with the secondary property tax, 20-year debt. So fiscal, 20 years from fiscal year 10 is fiscal year 30. And that's one reason I put it on this slide. I don't know if you can still see it, but if you see that drop in the last year, that's the first year that the fiscal, the first debt issued with secondary property tax starts to get paid off, 20 years after it was first issued in fiscal year 10. So that's, so every year we do pay some off, but since we're still issuing, it's still building until that point where it starts to drop off from the first issuance 10 years ago, in fiscal year 10.
I think we're learning a lot more about secondary property tax than we ever expected or wanted to know, but I'll add to, I assume in your projections, your assumptions are for growth in property values adjusting, so it's not a static figure because we know we have a lot of things working. Okay.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, yeah, we, I assume, we assume 6%, 4% appreciation, 2% new property, which is, that's been happening for the last few years, and that's what we assume going forward.
Great. I, I think we're done. Secondary property tax, unless anybody has questions? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Ryan.
Sure.
The second item under the budget was our fiscal budget, and so that is on the agenda for Monday for approval. We've covered it before in previous sessions, but if there's any comments, let me know. Otherwise, we'll move on to the second part of the special meeting, and that's taking, conduct a public hearing and take action on the following resolution regarding the home rule option. We did have a presentation on home rule at study session previously. I assume we don't need a, a presentation now?
I was planning on.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, all right. So, oh, adjourn, did, I had to call this one into order? This is.
Do we have any motions?
On Monday, you'll, you'll adjourn the first meeting, and then you'll.
You'll have to convene the special meeting and adjourn it also.
Okay, great, got it, okay.
So we don't have any motions right now?
No, no, not today, we're just reviewing the agenda, but for Monday, you have.
Okay.
Just when we finish the first agenda, don't stand up.
Okay, okay, we have two meetings going on Monday, got it. All right. So we're back to our study session agenda, which is to acknowledge receipt in various, receipt of various meetings. Is there a motion? Councilmember Luna made a motion to accept the meeting minutes, and Councilmember Spilsbury made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Last, we're to current events. Councilmember Spilsbury.
Okay, first off, since I have the mic, I have to say happy birthday to my fabulous assistant Melissa. So yay, the whole city of Mesa needed to know that I have the best assistant ever. We had our hydration donation campaign kickoff yesterday, super exciting over at United Food Bank, and the city of Mesa works with United Food Bank and other businesses to collect bottles of water. Our goal this year is 600,000 bottles of water, our biggest goal yet. Since the campaign started in 2007, the Mesa community has donated more than 5 million water bottles. That's pretty impressive, saving lives. And this campaign goes until September 30th, so grab an extra case of water bottles, or work together with your church groups or business groups, employees, to go in and pitch in together and, and buy a bunch of water. That would be awesome, thank you. And it shows hashtag Mesa kindness. And then yesterday also, we had the summer reading kickoff, and I was at the main library with Councilmember Freeman yesterday, and I know that Councilmember Luna was at the Red Mountain Library, was, anyone else able to do that? But that was really fun to see so many families, so many families, and so many kids out there. I remember as a young mom, desperate to find things to do in the summer, so I loved seeing all of those families there, participating in crafts, and we were able to read to the kids, it was really fun. So that reading program goes until August 1st, so check out the Mesa Public Library's website for all the details and events that they have planned. And I got to read The Rainbow Fish to the kids, which is about kindness, so I loved it. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Councilmember Luna?
Yeah, yesterday I did do the summer reading kickoff at Red Mountain Library. I was so impressed, there was so many kids there. I mean, it was packed, I've never seen so many kids there. And library staff was like trying to navigate all these kids and their families, but it was really exciting.
Good.
And I can't remember the book I read. I do know it's bilingual and nobody speaks Spanish, so I just read it in English. That was a lot of fun. Again, I also attended the water hydration donation campaign. This past Saturday, Councilmember Freeman and I attended the Mesa Firefighters Career Event. It was a lot of fun. They were really pleased that, oh, and Vice Mayor, yeah, so they were really pleased that we were there. So that was a lot of, that was real exciting. I also attended the NAMO Grand Opening Expansion. They have a new 300-gallon mixing facility. NAMO is short for Nordic Ammunition Company, which is a Norwegian Finnish aerospace and defense group specializing in production of ammunition, rocket engines, and space applications. And it was a great event, we had a lot of people attend that as well, and it's exciting there in northeast Mesa. But I think one of the things I was really, really touched on, I attended the sixth 888 event honoring a special ceremony to honor World War II veterans. Major Francis Griffin McLennan and Corporal Leah Thornton were members of the historic sixth 888 Post-Sov Battalion during World War II. They delivered countless mail to our soldiers during World War II, and they were projected that they would deliver all these, I think there were 65 million mail to our, to our armed forces during World War II. And it, so it was a group of African-American women, so it was really, really touching. And so they received a Congressional Gold Medal recognition ceremony to honor these veterans. And the woman that was there, I think she was 100 years old, so it was incredible, and the speakers were incredible. So I'm glad I was able to represent the city of Mesa, and it was held at the Commonwealth of Forces Museum. And, and then I produced a Solid Waste video. We're having some problems, some of our, our residents are throwing trash that don't belong in our trash trucks, and they're causing explosions. So we produced a video in English and in Spanish, we put on Facebook, and Councilmember, and Ed Eddie and I produced a video on water conservation, so that'll be running as well. So that's it.
I'll jump in. May 23, I had a community safety fair with a lot of the staff, and I want to thank our Reverend Kirby that, at her church there, it was the Casa de Sol neighborhood. She was kind enough to let us host it there. But we had Mesa Fire there, Michelle Long and her team, Mesa PD, Community Engagement, Animal Control, Code Compliance, East Valley Hispanic Bomberos, as well as East Valley United Black Firefighters help assisting with it. And a lot of the neighborhood came out, it was really cool because when you see a large ladder truck elevated up and the lights come on, and the neighbor kids came out, we had a bounce house. And so I like to appreciate all those that helped. It was a really fun event for them. And then our hometown heroes banners come down today, so we appreciate the staff doing that. That, that's a great engagement there, and thanks to Natalie and her leading on that. And other than that, I attended a lot with the colleagues, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson, or the mayor, did you have some things that you'd like to contribute?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to express my admiration and appreciation for my colleagues, the hard work you're doing. I, I'm envious, as, as may have already been stated, I, I tested positive for COVID earlier this week, so I'm staying home and participating via Zoom, but I'm looking forward to, to being with you again in person very soon. I'm feeling very good, and I appreciate the, the well wishes I've been receiving. Appreciate the corn that I had last night, Mr. Freeman, I think that, that will, absolutely, put me on a, on a really good path to getting back.
That fixes everybody.
Sweet corn.
But I do want to mention, you know, Councilmember Thompson, we did the POW MIA flag raising at Mesa Police Headquarters. So thank you, Councilmember Thompson, you didn't mention that. But myself, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Luna were there. So thank you.
Councilmember Thompson, did you have something? Oh, yes.
I'm okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that, thank you. Councilmember Heredia, did you want to mention the streetcar opening? I know it was opening in Tempe, but it's significant because it will play into what we plan to do in Mesa.
Yeah, about two weeks ago, we, Valley Metro and City of Tempe opened the streetcar, the initial line. I think it's about 2.5 miles, I might be wrong, but they, they have it interweaving with, on the eastern side of the, the city of Tempe. And if, right now, it, it ends at behind the AAC football stadium, Amri Salado. And the idea is to keep it moving towards Tempe Marketplace, and then eventually, hopefully, along into, into Mesa, Amri Salado, to Dobson. And so that's the hope, and we, we have various stages of planning and discussions there ongoing. So it was a great event, and hopefully could be replicated here in the future, so.
And Council, I guess we should say, it's, it's part of the, an anticipated future.
Prop 400.
Prop 400.
Yep.
Extension, that, that would be included, that part would be included for Mesa, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I have just a few things to add on. First of all, on the hydration donation campaign, I think is great, but I also wanted to say that we're expanding our hydration stations, which are water refill stations, and we're having an additional one at the Red Mountain Library as well as Falcon Field. So we're still making progress for to have water without the use of a water bottle. So that makes me very happy. Also, I attended Southwest Gas, Gas and ASU Lightworks had Hydrogen Day, and it was an overview of mixing, mixing hydrogen with renewable natural gas created from methane for a greener future. And I look forward to what they come up with to help us on our climate goals. And also want to say Happy Pride Month. Today is, well, June 2nd, but June is a month to celebrate our LGBTQ plus community, and I just want to say Happy Pride Month to our community. And thank you for being a part of our community, an important part of our community, and we celebrate you. Anything else? I guess we're done with the future meetings?
Yeah, we'll see you on Monday. Just remember, we have the study session and then two council meetings, so thank you.
Study session, same.
Yes, we don't have anything, yeah.
Okay, great. I think that concludes this morning's meeting, and so if I have a motion, Councilmember Luna has made a motion to adjourn, and I have a second, first, Councilmember Spilsbury, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, thank you.